One nation under God. Invisible, whatever being dusted for all.
Morning, everybody. Call me. Do you have a quorum? And we do need to amend our agenda to add approval of the credit application for Heartland Supply Company. So I take a motion to amend our agenda.
So.
I'll second that motion.
Motion second, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Alright, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda and approve the next.
I second.
Motion in a second?
Prove the amended agenda.
Alright, any other questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carry. Alright, Rich Brown, good morning. There, Rich?
Try it again.
I'm here, I'm here. How are you guys?
Good.
Got a few things this morning. I'll start off with some equipment things right now. We purchased that new loader from Nuss Truck or from Nuss Equipment. It was supposed to be in probably last week, week before, but they've got some permitting things to do. I'll probably see it sometime this week. And then the grader we purchased was supposed to be in kind of early June, but because of parts and stuff, we're looking at late June, maybe the first week in July, which isn't going to be a big deal for us. So, and then we're still tossing around the idea of getting our mechanic a service truck so he can go out and do some things without having to call. Service truck, a lot of times for being able to work on a piece of equipment while it's out on the road versus having to haul it in and tow it in. I know a few weeks back, we had some flat tires and we had to tow it in to get them fixed because it's trying to carry out a floor jack and manual tools is kind of pain in the butt. We've got one in Mitchell County and it's getting used pretty well and it's probably a nice tool to have to, especially in the winter time, if you want to take all your equipment and stuff out at one time. So, we're just still evaluating that yet. What we're looking at is something that'll have a little crane on it, a compressor, possibly, possibly a welder, a torch, but even with a generator on there, it'd be nice to have to run some tools. So, it's a slow process in that, we'll find the right piece of equipment. Nothing new, obviously, but I think it's going to be something beneficial to us if we go that route. So, just kind of give you a heads up on that. We got some, any questions on that, I guess, before I continue on? Okay, so, we've got our.
Rich, is there anything coming up on Richie Brothers auction?
I haven't looked at Richie Brothers. We had located something down in Dubuque. There's a guy that's got some service vehicles that were kind of priced right. I haven't looked at Richie Brothers, but we've been looking at some things, so.
Up next Tuesday, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't know, I haven't looked.
Somewhere, okay.
Okay, well, we've got our annual roadway painting, paint striping quote in. You guys remember, we talked about doing some epoxy down at the casino because that stuff wears off about as fast as you put it on. One thing I want to remind you guys, the painting went up a little bit this year. We only got, we got one quote this year from Camline Painting and they've been doing their painting for the last few years. They, if there's epoxy on it, they have to have a subcontractor do it because they don't have the machinery to do the epoxy. So, the epoxy paint at the intersection is going to be about $36,000. And part of that cost, obviously, is the epoxy paint is more expensive, but also they got to grind it in, so there's some grinding. You know, you got to bring some other equipment in to grind the pavement down so you get that paint under the surface or below the surface so we don't peel it off. So, but once the grinding's been done, we won't need to grind it again if we need to restripe it later. In fact, once the epoxy's down, obviously, we'll get some longer life out of it. We're expecting it, longer life out of the epoxy. And if it does need to be restriped later, because it's recessed into the pavement, we could probably get by with waterborne again, but we can see that when that comes. But that's like a $36,000 bill on that. The total quote between the two counties is $150,000, but we're down on, we're doing 67 miles in Worth County this year versus the 99 we did last year. So, the prices went up by about three bucks a gallon, about, everything went up about 20%. So, a little bit more expensive, but I think, in the long run, I think that the $36,000 out of the casino, if we're doing it every year anyway, maybe it's probably better money spent out there. So, I think I'm going to go ahead and accept the quote from the Camline people to stripe our roads and get that epoxy put down at the interstate interchange there because it just wears out too fast. We won't, we won't be doing the gore area, that, the white stripes where the delineators are because no traffic runs on that anyway. And those delineators are reflective enough, we won't need to do that. But every other line and symbol will get recessed into the pavement. So, you guys got any questions on that?
No, but while we're on the subject of the interchange, we had discussed speed limits out there last fall. And I got late for getting signs in. Did we get the signs in and we would have to do, I believe, a resolution to?
We.
We're going to wait and do that until.
I kind of thought we maybe scrapped that idea just because we have to go through a full-blown traffic study, speed study. We can't just go and plop down some speed signs because we want to, so we'll have to go out and do any valuation of traffic out there and monitor the existing traffic speeds that are there if we see that they're, and I'm talking mostly about over the interstate section to reduce the speed because we've got a stop ahead. You know, we've got the signal ahead and we're going to a complete stop. The other only part that I see that maybe could benefit is maybe coming from the north, but we're already coming down to, I think we're down to 35 miles an hour coming around that curve, if I remember right. But I thought maybe we kind of put that a hole because we have to go out and do a full-blown, either have the sheriff do it or go out there and do an actual sit and record speeds of traffic randomly and then go through it. We can't just plop down signs and say we want these speeds there. So, I thought maybe we kind of put that in a holding pattern. Maybe I was wrong in assuming that, but.
I think we wanted to go ahead with it, but.
Okay. Well.
Out there probably even from the south, that needs to be, if it isn't changed on the curves, it needs to be changed and then.
Okay.
The norm, I think you're right, it already is.
Well, it was because I had, I had talked to the DOT on some of that too a little bit and they, because they're involved, they're, it's their, you know, their bridge and the ramps and things like that going over the interstate. So, if we want to pursue that, I'll start working on doing a study out there to find out and determine what our speeds are needed to be.
I know we can't control the people coming off the interstate, but a lot of people coming from 105 up over that hill. I was going to issue to try and get them to slow down too.
Okay, I'll pursue that then.
Appreciate it.
And then with, you know, I know that the COVID thing is still around, but you know, with Blair leaving and now another employee leaving here soon, I'm going to need to start putting some advertising out and get a couple more employees hired back on just to give you guys a heads up on, I'll do some advertising again here shortly and I don't know how we'll do interviews and stuff yet, but I'm going to need to get at least two more employees back in the system with the two that are going to be, one gone and one going to be gone. So, just to give you a heads up on that. We've got our rock run maps, we're going to modify those and get that stuff out. We'll see if we get it out this week to the quarries and get some numbers back on our rock run this year. Construction wise, the 342nd Street Bridge is out. They took it out last week. They're working on putting a drill together to start drilling rock sockets for the piling, the beams or the, I'm sorry, the piling and then the encasement of those. In addition, we'll have pre-con with Heartland Asphalt this week for the asphalt projects we've got going on here this summer in both counties. Then one final thing. We talked about that wind tower gravel equivalency thing that we modified into the wind tower agreement. They've already evaluated based on their proposed easels and whatever else. They've given us, not really, we didn't have an invoicing yet, but they gave us, I guess, a summary spreadsheet of what the payment would be of, I think it was $90,000, $95,000 and change for the few miles of road they'll be using on hard surface. So, I had just printed it out when I got back here this morning, so I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. But it sounds like they're ready to pay up on those, that gravel equivalency thing right away and get some money in our hands. So, I'll look at it a little bit and see if I can figure out what's going on and get back with you next week on that. The one thing I was kind of concerned about is since Mitchell County takes care of the maintenance on that, on S-68 there that is any avenue north and south, that, not sure how to handle that maintenance payment yet. But I mean, we pay for partial, when it's new, we pay for that. So, I, it's, we'll figure that out as far as how that money goes. That's probably, if it would be anything, it would be maybe like $30,000 of that, about a third of that cost is because of that road, so. But anyway, we'll evaluate that. I just want to give you a heads up on that and tell you where everything's at with that wind tower stuff. And as far as everything else goes, I did a quick drive-through on my way in this morning and it looks like the roads are holding up pretty well. They've been putting rock down on places they need to, so. And we'll modify our rock run this year based on trying to stay out of their way with the, with their operations and we'll see if we can make them pay for some rock when we're done, so.
Question out there on that, do, I know we've kind of discussed, was there an actual truck out that they intend on using?
Yeah, they have.
Equipment in? I don't ever remember seeing a map of it, I just didn't know if you had one or not.
Yeah, I can forward you a map of what they gave me. I know that what, what roads they have on the map that they were using were going to be all their, their routes. I don't know if they have it designated, you know, some of the other roads and I don't, here we now don't think we ever talked about, you know, what roads they could use empty versus loaded. But they've, they've got every road that they, on their map, every road that they've got to get to a tower to will be a truck route of some sort. So, I'll get, I can get you a map, AJ, on what their routes are.
I appreciate that.
I got a call from Joyce Russell. She want to know how that farmer market stuff road is coming over there for her area.
Yeah, and I, I have a message or a phone number to return to. She was on it, I guess I was trying to, I sent an email to the new mayor on that agreement there, so I guess I didn't, I haven't received any response yet back from them that I know of. So, I'll give Joyce a call here in a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
One other thing, and I don't know how this affects the drainage between the two counties. I think it's DD 22, joint 22 and 1. Does that sound familiar with Mitchell County? I'm not quite sure how it affects Worth County at all because it's a joint district, but we've got an individual in Mitchell County that claims they shouldn't be part of the district anymore. I guess I'm, I'm not quite sure if. What's that?
Reclassify and found out then, he doesn't want to be in it.
Well, and I've talked to, I've talked to our county attorney over there and I've talked to John Rosengren already. In order for him to get out of the district at all, it's got to be re, re. The only way you can get out of it is if you declassify the whole system. So, it's a, it's a fight over there that we're dealing with. I don't think, I don't think it'll affect you guys as of yet, but you know, guys in the loop as to what's going on, it'll probably, it's embarrassing to say that it's over $5 assessment, but.
Costs $5,000 to get rid of a $5 assessment.
He's already spent money on an attorney, so it doesn't make a lot. But anyway, he's on the bottom end, it doesn't feel he gets any benefit, obviously, so. But his ground still drains the way it drains, so. Anyway, I'll just keep you guys in tune as to what's happening with that. If it comes down to something major, then the two, the two trustees, the two doors have to talk about it, so. Anyway, just kind of give you heads up.
Sound good.
Any other questions for me?
Okay.
How many road, road blowouts do we end up with this past week?
Oh, RC was in here, he told me we had, I don't know, was it? Well, he said 17 on Thursday, but then after that, we didn't really have anything.
Yeah, Wednesday through.
One day, I know. Okay.
I had, we had several in Mitchell County too, but we had done an experiment over there on a, on about, about nine miles of road where I saw it in a one-inch expansion joint every 500 feet. And didn't have any buckling on that road. Not to say that we would or wouldn't have, but they're already getting narrow, so I think it might be something we need to kind of try over here a little bit, so.
Wouldn't hurt, that gets to be a lot.
It does, it does. If we can, if we can get some life out of it, you know, we've got a system over there, we figured out how to do it. We just got to kind of transfer our knowledge from over there to here and make it work too, but I think it's doable. Just takes time. We've got the saw, you know, basically out as a saw and wide and then we can get the materials to do the other stuff, so. And hopefully, hopefully the things have stretched out enough with those temperatures we had last week. Now, we're kind of drier, we're kind of drier this week even though we're warm. I know the moisture plays a big part in it, so does the heat, but one without the other should reduce the probability. And I say that now and I'm going to eat my words later probably, but typically. What's that?
Know by the night when it hits 93 or whatever.
Right, 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 so I guess we'll be on top of it, but.
I guess, thanks, Rich.
I'll be on if you guys have any questions coming up.
Okay, thank you. Alright, drainage.
Flames.
Drainage flames. Bunch of little ones piled there. About 15 hundred bucks?
I'll make a motion to give the drainage flames.
All second. Motion second, other discussion? Are none, all in favor, aye? Aye, both. Get one of the rubber stamp ones.
Yeah, sorry, I got put in a right-handed.
My whole life, I got away. Alright, speaking of drainage and district that way, wasn't there? That 22, east of Grafton, wasn't there? Something on there about possibly getting upsized in tile or something?
A couple ladder, it was 10 and 10B.
Oh, is that what it was? We heard anything more on that?
We have meetings.
Okay, okay, that's, that's a part of that, okay. I just, that got me thinking, I know there was something over there.
What, we bumped up to the 27th last time?
Next week.
Yeah.
Any else with drainage? About regular flames?
You have any questions? And I'll remember, you're so interesting.
I do not have any questions. Yeah.
Make a motion to the regular flames.
Motion to approve the regular flames. Second, second, other discussion? Are none, all in favor, aye? Aye. Aye, both.
And there's the right. Yep.
Alright, so. Payroll flames? Open to approve payroll flames? Second, other discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye, aye, both. When was that cool? She's out of a special meeting, just wanted to beg you again today. She'll be around. Time for your canvas, right?
Can we do that credit app that we're shooting that for?
Okay.
This is for Heartland, for supplies for the sodium.
Yeah, for real supplies? Motion to approve the credit application to Heartland Supply for the industrial supplies?
So move.
I'll second.
Other discussion? Are none, all in favor, aye? Aye. Aye, both. Motion carry. Takes your signature, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Jason Petersburg, any updates?
I did meet with Black Hills Energy out on subdivision last week. He was going to go back and talk to their business development people and see what they could do regarding wanting to charge a fee for relocating that gas. I did not hear back from him before the meeting today, so I expect to hear from him this week. We did get a plan put together as far as getting that taken care of before the contractors are up there working on the storm sewer, so shouldn't see any delays there. Other than that, full speed ahead, the dirt contractor worked all weekend. He did work Saturday, Sunday in anticipation of Tuesday, Wednesday of this week. So, just moved in the guys' weekends around, he said, making it work for everybody. So, he made a lot of headway out there on excavation. I talked to him this morning, he's thinking about eight to 10 more days of mass excavation and they should have the majority of the, majority of it moved, then there'll be some cleanup, some edges, subgrade rock for the road and stuff, but. Good weather, he'll keep proceeding there. Storm sewer and is going good along Wheeler Wood. Sanitary sewer, they're thinking two more days and they'd be done with the sanitary installation. And then they'll drop back and finish the water main work, so. Oh, and all if the weather cooperates, I'd say by the end of June, first part of July, they should be ready to pave.
Well, how did that sewer, or storm sewer go, whatever, you closed that road, that go alright?
Did it in one day.
Yep. Oh, perfect. That's good. Perfect.
The road's back open, obviously, there's gravel in the trench for now. They'll patch it back in one lane at a time here when the subcontractor can get there and patch that.
They're going to try to do that during the week, so it's not affected for the weekend?
Yes. Well, it'll be a maintenance mix, but yeah, I'll see if we can do it early in the week, so there'll be some.
During, yeah, last weekend, the wedding venue opened back up, you know, and there's a lot of traffic goes that way. He was just concerned, he didn't want to have to plant a detour. I didn't even know roads were going to be closed that day, but that worked out good, so. But just hopefully if they're going to patch it back in, it wouldn't affect it for the weekends.
We'll, we'll keep one lane open, minimum.
Okay.
So, we won't close it again.
Appreciate that.
Next, expansion of the paving, that road, they couldn't even saw it. Every time they tried to saw Wheeler Wood, it kept pinching their saw. They finally had to bring a breaker in and break it. Actually, it, when it pinched the saw, it actually shot a crack down the road, right where their saw blade was. So, there's a lot of pressure on that.
We run into that too a lot. Jason, did you get any, any local concerns about the 36-inch storm sewer tying back in across the road or not?
Yep, talked to Randy.
Okay.
Sign. He understands what we're doing now and no issues after it was explained.
Okay, sounds good. Just wanted to see if somebody checked with it.
Yep.
That's all you got for us?
Yep.
Okay, so, sounds good. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Oh, hello, Jane, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good, looks nice and sunny there.
Yeah.
Yeah, how about that? Yeah, how you like my virtual background there?
Yeah, beautiful, beautiful.
Yeah, you know, you got to have something to make you feel good on these days.
Been looking at the final approval of the plat for the addition of there?
Yes, we have, and the board did do the final approval of the addition plat on last Wednesday night. So, we do, we recommend that the board approve the final plat with the addition.
Okay.
And I have not seen any paperwork done on that.
Okay.
Like a resolution or whatever.
Okay. We need to do a resolution, not rather?
I don't know what the, that'd be a county attorney question. Or Jason, maybe.
Do we need to do, Jason, do you have any idea if we need to do a resolution on that?
Um, I don't have your subdivision ordinance in front of me, but I would say most likely.
Okay. I have lots of my ordinance. We'll probably just stable this until our next meeting, then we'll put a resolution together. Yep.
Okay. So, the other thing we have is that the Knutson Oil H&amp;K propane has requested, there's a plot of land there south of the wastewater treatment plant, right north of coal ready mix. An area of David Hanger's state, that's just a, it's a wooded area, old home, farmstead, homestead there that they want to change from egg to light industrial for the purpose of putting up some storage tanks, LP storage tanks. Really didn't have any questions from the public regarding that, so the board did recommend that we go ahead and rezone that to light industrial pending the final survey of it. We don't know the exact acres, it's around five acres, but he was just sort of making sure that we were going to approve the zoning change for it before he did the final survey of it.
Okay. Yeah, I guess we'll have to wait on that then until you get a final survey so we know exactly what's going on there. Do the proper, proper steps, I suppose.
Yeah, so as soon as we get that, you want me to come back to the board and say this is the, and I'll show you the plat of what they've got surveyed off for it.
Yes, that would be good, so that we know our exact, exact area, exact placement of everything, so.
Sure, I can do that.
Sure, sounds good. Any else for Jane? Okay, thanks, Jane, just let us know when you get that stuff and we'll move forward.
Okay, will do, thanks.
Thank you.
Cost advisory services, the contractor, it's every three years.
Cost advisory service.
They, um, I didn't do my research. It has to do with EHS and getting compensated for what's used.
Oh.
And they're, they're what was the same as last time and we end up getting more money back from that. That's always where guaranteed.
Make a motion to approve the cost advisory service contract.
There's motions, there's second? Second. Any other discussion? Are none, all in favor, aye? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carry. Candace?
Your report.
Reports?
Yeah. Get everything else off my file first.
There we go. Sounds good. Sheriff's report?
Must be the one.
That's $7,900. Motion to accept the reports?
So move.
I'll second it.
Other discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye. Aye, opposed? Carry?
And cigarette license for come and go, I haven't received the paperwork. I got the check from Diamond Joe, Joe Stop, but I haven't gotten the paperwork. So, I have the paperwork for come and go. I got the check from Diamond Joe, Joe Stop, but I haven't gotten the paperwork, so I have the paperwork for come and go, so we're gonna prove that one first, so that they can get the paperwork for me.
Yeah. Motion to approve the cigarette license for come and go, so.
Second.
Any discussion? There are none, all favor I?
All right.
All right, both. Motion carry.
Ooh, you got it all, woman.
Perfect.
Okay.
Primary election canvas.
These are the reports pretty much all. These are all the fun ones that you guys designed.
Yeah.
Um, this is the other part of the canvas. Oh, wait, not on the canvas. Okay, so basically, what's going on is, we're gonna go through and, um, we're gonna go through totals. Um, if you start with the United States Senator, Republican.
Yeah.
Um, Joni Gert should have 554.
Yeah.
Um, and yours, Mark, will kind of follow it, but it'll be the total of the two, so. It's, it's the combination of the two, so yours, you'll have to just trust me on that one.
No, no problem.
I have looked over it a couple times, um, write-ins were seven.
Yeah.
Um, so then we go to the United States Senator, Democrat. Okay, there were 62 for Michael Franken, 49 for Kimberly, Kimberly Graham, 351 for Teresa Greenfield, 14 for Eddie Morrow, three for Cal Woods, and no write-ins. Um, US Representative District 1, Republican. There were 185 for Thomas Hansen, 370 for Ashley Henson, and three write-ins. US Representative District 1, Democrat. There were 453 for Abby Finkner, no write-ins. For State Senator, District 26, Republican, there were 568 for Waylon Brown, two write-ins.
How many did you say for that?
Or 568, did I say something else?
Well, that's about it, sorry, 516.
So you're on. You got back up. You jumped a page.
All right, okay. Yep.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Um, okay, then Democrat for State Senator, there were, those all write-ins. Were seven that were scattering, 24 for Deb Sharper, three for Waylon Brown, two for Tim Knutson, and two were blank. Where they just marked the oval and didn't put anything. Um, for State Representative, District 51, Republican, there were 573 for Jane Bloomingdale, and three write-ins. For State Representative, District 51, Democrat, it was 413 for Jane Burnia, and, um, five write-ins. County Supervisor, District 2, Republican, there were 113 for Marx, maybe, 37 for Bill Shorty, and 138 for Gary Hanson. No write-ins. County Supervisor, District 2, Democrat, there were three scattering, nine for Gary Hanson, seven for James Byrd, um, two for Annette O'Donnell, two for David Hogan. County Auditor, Republican, there were 559 for Jackie Bakehouse, three write-ins. County Auditor, Democrat, there were five scattering, 20 Jackie Bakehouse, three Amy Ferguson, two Deidre Harris. County Sheriff, Republican. There were 569 for Dan Bank, um, seven scattering. For County Sheriff, Democrat, there were four scattering, 24 for Dan Bank, three for Jesse Luther, and two, oh, two blank, two for Mike Davy, and two for Jim John.
Mike Davy or Ike Davy?
Probably Ike.
Was it, is there a Mike?
It's a Mike, yeah.
Oh, Mike, oh, okay.
So that, and I suggest we just get through the rest of the meeting and then sign, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Time to steal.
So if everything checks out.
I'm a little bit of mind, so.
And we'll get this all buttoned up after meeting. Start stretching your hand. Yeah.
Okay, so, take the motion to approve the primary election canvas.
So move.
Second, motion is second, any other discussion? There are none, all favor Paul Abrams. All right, so maybe, or stone, I, emotional carry. Canvas is passed. Now we're down to department heads. We are open now, correct? Open to the public, good deal. Um, I think every, well, hard to tell, but I think everybody's prepared for it, so we'll see how well it goes. See, recorder's already had business, so. And then also, uh, imaging company will be setting up later this morning?
Supposed to be here by 11:00.
Okay.
So we've got three spots next to the garage, because they're gonna have to run electricity though, so.
Sure.
They're too fast.
Good deal.
Should be here two weeks.
They have another caller?
We'll see.
I mean, that's a big question, you know, the whole supply.
I, you know, we've run, we ran the, uh, the trailer, the MA trailer to plug in, so I, I think we'll be okay.
Probably got air conditioning, I'm sure.
We'll see.
Yeah.
They just asked for plug-ins, so we got a plug-in.
Yeah, from this, is there's, uh, is coming over to it or not?
Yep. Underneath. Might have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there is some power on the east side of the corridor too that we can run out.
Oh, outside.
Yep. Right outside.
Yeah, I might have to split it up a little bit for them.
Okay.
Yeah, we gotta get that going and done.
Yeah. Put bed before the end of the year.
Yes. Correct. Um, question trees I had, I guess, on signage. If signage had been discussed or on the south entrance, the door?
Ben Stoss had already did that.
Okay. Okay.
I would get to it.
All right, I thought, we don't make signage here over the, down here.
Down the road department?
Oh. They don't make something.
Well, it's not happening, I see.
Right. Otherwise, I hope there's somebody who just gets some, nevermind, I'll make that.
Trying to.
In town here?
In town.
Yeah, one third guy in town here, maybe.
Tim Johnson, Johnson.
That would be an option or not, but. Chief and easy. Um, do any other department heads have any discussion, I guess, right now?
Could, they just go set the sign up, they're making easel type, that's what I'm saying, the setup up front. Two sides of easel. But it would work probably the best instead of big hole, put something in the ground.
What if it's permanent?
Which it should be. It's not gonna change.
We're gonna eventually want.
A post?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Which, okay.
I put a sign on the front door, but that means that they.
I know, but I mean, for right now, we could get an easel.
Yeah.
Take the thing out and then later on, get a pole or post and.
Yeah.
Put yourself something metal on it.
We could have a rope, we could get some, that's how it's far, whatever, from the road guys, and do get a permanent sign and just put that in and bolt it to that.
Right.
I think that'd be fairly easy.
Just gotta decide what to put on it, my.
Layman's terms, simple.
Yeah.
Simple. Um, yeah, any, any department heads have any questions or concerns of what, what's gonna go on? I've talked about it for weeks now, so hopefully everybody's on the same path, ready to roll.
And remember, the charter's office is still locked because of the, that they, they couldn't.
Took an appointment over there, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
You're being on track.
That, that just wouldn't work.
Right, right, no, that's the, that's the best way, I think, so.
So as long as people call ahead and have their stuff with them, well, we should be good to go.
Yeah, we're still using the no ways, I think it's looking really well for them.
Yeah. Good. Nothing else from any department heads?
Yeah, Supervisor Weekly reports. Ken?
Yeah, I had the, the PAC 4, we're gonna transfer some money from, uh, Second Ju, Juval Court Services and also from the, uh, the occupancy funds memo, the Second District. So, that's all we're doing with that, just transferring some funds back from Cerrito County to Floyd and back to Cerrito County.
Okay. Sounds good.
I got, I got two hundred yet, I gotta up sign and get email back.
Okay. Cool.
Yep. I had a, a workhorse development, again, we, uh, discussed for a couple hours, all we wanna do is share viability agreements and stuff, working on that, try to get a base written to send off to all the county attorneys to get approvals of, make sure things okay there. You just continue and move ahead, you know, we got pretty much the rest of the year to get it done, but we're trying to stay on top.
Get it done before that. Got the projection, hopefully by.
That's what it was extended to, otherwise it was fly or June 1st or something like that.
I thought.
You know, and they extended it because of COVID until the end of the year, so we'll, we continue to work on it, so.
Okay.
It's going well.
Good. That's.
That was it.
I didn't have anything last week, so, well, believe it or not, if I did, I forgot, but we sure didn't. Um, and go on the agenda. Um, I do know, there's a fire chief's meeting coming up, I don't know if we'll need to be involved with anything, I might just attend it.
Okay.
Um, but, something we kinda gotta guess. Also, working on a little more too is the, uh, ambulance agreement thing, I know we were gonna try to put out more info this summer, but with the fair and with all that stuff, but now all of a sudden, we gotta change how we do that, so I guess we'll have to start compiling more information, then maybe by early fall, we can, like, summer, early fall, maybe do, just start to get the info out there, what it's gonna cost, how it's gonna.
So all the 4th July stuff canceled.
Yeah, mostly fireworks are not, right? Like fireworks, I mean, I heard they're still gonna do that, 'cause that's.
Well, yeah, then we could've set up a temporary book, for hours, for a couple hours during the day to talk about it, you know?
Right.
Because it's not happening, it wouldn't be much good, so.
Right, and that's, you know, we gotta watch that too, when people start gathering.
Well, you know, so, yeah. But that's as long as I work.
That's the thing, like, I mean, hey, like, all but going on now, you know, Turkey Day is, the graph was canceled, you know, everything's canceled, so.
Well, you're seeing a big push on social media for getting information, that's what we're considering.
Yeah.
We've got great traffic on most of our sites.
And I think we'll just, we'll just have to kinda.
With a lot of people paying the tax, they don't use computers.
Right.
Exactly.
Well, they should get some numbers together and then maybe we can work with, once we do, we can work on the signal too, and the anchor and, and do an article on that, maybe get that out to a lot of the others that don't, that aren't so tax savvy. Um, just to put it out there, just so people can start considering and thinking about it.
I know, it's only two papers, but I don't know about the eastern side of the county, and the western side of the county, you're looking at the graphic in the summit, probably the coverage for, um, Silver Lake and Bristol.
Sure.
As far as information for those kind of people over there.
And I guess we talked to Mitchell.
I mean, it's more cost, but the national press would do the other one over there, then, right?
I don't know, I mean.
I mean, I don't know how much we gotta do.
If we just do an article in the paper about it, or if we have to pay for advertising, I guess, we'd have to talk with them and see.
Yeah.
What it's gonna take, if we're gonna do any advertising on that, we'll have to find a source for that money, I suppose. To pay for advertising, so, that's the thing, we'll, we'll consider a few months down the road, I'd say.
That's what I mean, you know, I, if it's just social media, it really should be announced, I mean, if there is a vast majority of people, I shouldn't say majority, but some that do not look at that period.
Mm-hmm.
Still like the old newspaper.
Yeah. That's understandable, I mean.
And that doesn't cover that many people anymore.
Right.
No.
Right.
Well, you've covered as many people and then hopefully.
When do, when do tax statements come out? They come in the fall?
March and, uh.
Probably around September.
September.
They're doing March.
Would it be beneficial to put a, I guess I'm Dr. Jake, but could we put a sheet?
Could be a little mailer and a passport.
In there with it, just have one piece of paper added to that, so we don't get double postage, but.
Right.
Use the postage that we're paying for.
Yeah.
Bright paper or something.
Just something about what it's gonna take, I mean, that's a, something we're already paying for, it's going out, we can just utilize the rest of that postage and put some info out on it, and that goes everybody.
That would be one of the best.
Everybody that would be paying.
Piece of taxpayers, you know?
Yeah, okay, I'll talk to Jake on that a little bit, then we got some time to get it together and see if we can do that.
Might have to fill stuff in with.
You make an appointment, well, I'll make an appointment, I'll take my turns.
All right.
Well, I'll take our turn. All right, uh, nothing else, then, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, any other discussion? All favor I?
Um, we did have one, Dan just popped up.
Sorry. Hold off on that motion. Oh, 4th of July, we should hear tonight, it comes to me, if it's.
Yeah.
Not the nursing home, a small place, you know?
But still won't be enough traffic.
Right. It's hard, cut the way down, off that line, thanks, sure, see, I didn't notice that. All right, all favor I?
All right.
All right, both. Meeting is adjourned, thanks, everybody.